I'd like to ask the Southborough School Committee Chair and the Northborough-Southborough School Committee Regional School Chairman to call their 2019, 2019 meetings to order.
Okay, I call the Region to order.
Call Southborough to order.
And I'd like to call the Superintendent's Union Number Three to order. And this year, Northborough members are Susan Lawrence, Keith LaBelle, and Kelly Gannett. And Southborough members are Katara Martin, Roger Challen, and Paul Desmond. This year, the three officers, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary will be from the Northborough School Committee as the officers alternate annually between Northborough and Southborough School Committees. And at this time, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Chair of the Superintendent's Union Number Three.
Do we have to have a second for the meeting to come to order?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry.
So is there a motion to appoint Chair of the Superintendent's Union Number Three?
I move that we appoint Susan Lawrence Chair of Superintendent's Union Number Three. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'll turn it over to you to ask for nominations for Vice Chair and Secretary.
Sure. Thank you for that. So the next thing we will need to do is vote for the Vice Chair and Secretary of the Union. And so I will entertain motions for that. Paul?
I move that we appoint Keith LaBelle Vice Chair. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so Keith will be Vice Chair. Motion passes. And now we need a Secretary.
I move that we appoint Kelly Gannett as Secretary.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Now we have those elected.
And I'll turn it over to Kathy.
So our first order of business is audience sharing.
My name is Debbie Keef, and I am a resident of Southborough. I am also the co-chair of the Northborough-Southborough Music Association. And I wanted to take a few minutes to tell you a little bit about the music association and to talk a little bit about the music program, and then to ask a few questions about the replacement of Brent Ferguson at Melikan. Because news has gotten out that he was going to be replaced 20 percent of his current position, and many people have a lot of concerns about that. This is in no way confrontational at all. If anything, this is just a way to say, how can we work on this together? And how can we make sure that we are making the best possible choice that we can? I used to be a member of the Southborough School Committee for a number of years, and I remember one of our priorities at that time was hiring the best qualified educators. So we're really concerned about making sure that we're making the best decision going forward with how we're going to replace this. So I mentioned I'm the co-chair of the Northborough-Southborough Music Association, otherwise known as NSMA. And we're a nonprofit organization run by parent volunteers dedicated to supporting music faculty and students in the Northborough-Southborough School District, as well as promoting music in our communities. So it's really important to know that we are not like music boosters. We are a nonprofit organization, and we work very, very hard to help build the program here. One of the, any funds that we do have, we vote as a committee, and one of the biggest things that we do with that is we give music scholarships to students at the elementary and middle school, and this is to help build the program. So important, building and maintaining the program. One thing that we also focus on is retaining our students when they transition from elementary to middle. Are they going to stick with music? Can we help with that, to continue to build our wonderful music program that we have? And also, middle to high school. And a number of years ago, just to show you like how we all work as a community, is that for a certain reason, we were realizing that we were losing a lot of students going from the middle school program to the high school program. And there was actually a reason why. And so we spoke with Amy Collins, who's the head of the Fine and Performing Arts here at the high school. And together with that realization of what was going on, we made a change, and it was a change in a really positive way. That actually, not only did it retain more students, but it actually flourished the program that was going on here. So that's why we really feel like we're so dedicated that we want to be able to share anything that we can. Personally, I have three boys. They have been in the music program in the district for 12 years, and I have a son who will be a senior, so I just have one year left. Whatever goes on at Melikan is not going to affect me or my family. I could say, oh, it's not going to affect me. But I know that the reason I'm here, and all of you are here, everybody in this room, is we're all advocates for children. And music is just so important because of also how it really saves our kids, and especially at the vulnerable middle school age, when the music department is a safe haven for these kids. And everyone has heard the stories of that, you know, it's a really, it's a critical time. And one thing that we do, as well as giving out these scholarships for the younger kids to take private lessons, which can often really inspire them to keep going, or try a new instrument, or improve, we also give out the high school scholarships for the seniors who are leaving. We like to give them some scholarship money also, to help them continue their music in college. And when they write their essays to apply for these scholarships, time and time again, they talk about the impact that music made on their academic life here, about their friends, about their self-worth, and, you know, really their self-esteem. I think that's so important. And I know that a lot of kids will write their college essays about music. And a lot of times, that is like the thing that sets them apart for getting into a certain college. And I think maybe you guys had heard that when the Fine and Performing Arts made their presentation here. So just in, I won't go on and on. Music is really amazing. Like, we are well-known in Central Mass. In the central, we're in a district that the kids can audition to, go to districts where if you are accepted, then you get to perform in a certain concert, and it's a big honor. And there's about 70 to 100 schools that come together to, and they select, you know, one wind ensemble, one Jasmine. Well, a number of years back, a jazz band is going to have maybe 20 to 25 members in it. And Algonquin had, I wish I had the exact percentage, but it was almost half Algonquin students. That is a huge achievement. So you're saying that 70 schools had kids come and try out, and that, like, we're known for our music. And I would be really concerned if we're not being super careful about preserving it here, what that is going to mean? And is that going to have a ripple effect? Do we know exactly what the ratios are? How, if we have to combine the 7th and the 8th grade band, how big will that be? And will that be feasible? And will that take away something from our students? These are like really the concerns that we have. So I guess unfortunately, what happened was, you know, when the budget was passed in Northborough, there weren't specifics in which areas were going to be cut. And so now, parents, and you'll hear very shortly from Justin Moyer, who just graduated Algonquin in the music program, about how many people are really, really concerned about this, and what can we do moving forward. So one really important to know is that in the Northborough K through eight, there is no strings program at all. Kids do not have that option. In Southborough, kids can stay, any child can take strings, starting in 3rd grade. So sadly, you know, and I do understand Southborough's its own district, Northborough's its own district, but we are like together, right, a unified district. Let's make sure that what we're, that we're combining to feed into Algonquin are, these kids are having equal opportunities. Because that's a pretty big difference right there. Because there are actually many kids who play a stringed instrument and a band instrument throughout, from 3rd grade all the way through 8th grade. And they can continue to do, they have opportunities to continue doing that here at the high school as well. Somebody could be in the full orchestra, even if they are in the band. Another thing that concerns me is, what is being proposed to replace Brent is to, so he is going to be, his position will be funded supposedly 20 percent. And how they're going to do that is they're going to hire two teachers, or two people to come in to teach sectionals. This is important to know, because at Melikan, when kids go to a sectional, they are pulled out of their academic class. That doesn't happen in Southborough at the middle school. When kids have, when they have their sectionals, it is built into their schedule, so they are not missing something else. So if our kids, starting in the middle school, are already starting to kind of get stressed out about their grades, and they want the opportunity to go and be a part of music, but then they're, when they get back, they have to wonder, what did I miss? You know, I didn't get the notes? And that's putting, like, let's not add more stress to this wonderful thing that is a de-stresser for our students. So one question that I had, and I don't know if these can be answered or not, is, are these positions going to be posted in the near future?
Yeah, we can't answer questions. We can listen, but we can't.
Oh, you can't answer questions? Thank you. Don't say that for reasons. Okay. So let me just say, I know that it is the desire for many people in this community to have a meeting at some point at the district office, so that we can pool all these people, all this time that we've dedicated into making sure that our program stays great. Let's make, like, it would be great if we could all come together and work as a team. So we could sit down, and another thing, I think it's really important, like, we really need to be looking at these numbers. We need to know exact, how is this going to impact our kids? As far as if we're going to try to combine the 7th and 8th grade band at Melikan, what is that going to mean for them? And then ultimately, what will that end up meaning for the whole music program of our district, which is just such an incredible integral academic thing that we have here? So let's keep something great, and if nothing, let's build if anything else. Let's bring strings to Northborough, because, you know, Westborough, their strings program is out of this world. You know, let's say someone's moving to the area, well, they don't even offer strings, you know, in Northborough, in, you know. So that's all. And I apologize in advance that I can't stay for the whole meeting. I didn't realize I was going to be coming tonight. So thanks for letting me share all that. And I'm going to introduce Justin. He's really awesome person, and he's going to just read a little bit, something that he, he wrote a petition, and a lot of people signed this petition, because that's how many people in our communities feel so strongly.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yes!
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Can I ask a question? So when you say, I have a few questions. So first of all, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
My name's Jessica, and I'm one of the Southborough K-8 school committee members. A few questions. First of all, it bothers me that there's no strings program in K through eight, which happens in Southborough. That does not sit well with me. What, and then you talked about combining the 7th and 8th grade band. We do that in Southborough. What, we have like 7th and 8th grade band combined.
Right. It's different.
What's the difference?
Can I just interrupt?
Yeah.
So just, so I think you have, first of all, I want to thank you for coming this evening and sharing, and definitely listening to what you had to say, and we'll be reaching out to you.
Right.
And definitely want to engage in a dialogue, and make sure you get your questions answered, and that we support decisions with data. So I will be reaching out to you, you know, and tomorrow, I'll send you an email and find a time where we can connect and have a really great conversation and dialogue.
So we, okay.
So I was just going to say that the audience sharing, the reason why, it might seem odd that we're not answering questions or having dialogue with you, is because it hasn't been posted on our agenda. And so someone who's interested in this topic, you know, they didn't get advance notice that this would have been on the agenda and discussed. So that's kind of, it's kind of.
Oh, yeah. No, I didn't even know if I would be able to ask questions.
Just for the audience, too.
Okay, yeah.
On TV, and they may be saying, wow.
Why, yeah, why aren't they?
Kind of being rude, but it's just kind of the way we have to follow Mass General laws and things like that.
Exactly. Just like you're saying, if the positions haven't been posted yet, then this is nothing that can be discussed. Correct.
I will, we'll be reaching out to you.
Great.
So wait, clarification? So we can or cannot ask questions?
Cannot.
I thought you just said we could. Sorry, that's why I asked.
So we typically don't engage in a dialogue during audience sharing on topics that are not on the agenda. So since it's not on the agenda, we wouldn't be asking questions.
Okay.
So you can ask that it be put on a subsequent agenda.
That's what I was just going to say. Can we request?
Because you don't want to violate the open meeting law.
So can I request, how do I request that this be addressed?
So at the end of the meeting, when we talk about like our next meeting, then we can request to put it on our agenda for next, for our next combined, combined meeting.
Okay.
Also, we just want to comment that it is a Northborough K through eight, you know, agenda item in terms of the position.
It's not necessarily combined one, correct?
It, you know, it is, and it's not, because we feed into the same high school. And whatever happens in Northborough is affecting Northborough and Southborough, because we come together at the high school. And, you know, anyway. All right, thanks so much for listening, but let me just let Justin just mention what he wants to about the petition that he wrote up.
Hi.
This is Justin Moyer.
Hello. So I'm just going to keep it quick. So hi, I'm a former student, and I graduated this year. So I have a petition with over 1,000 signatures from people who want to keep the Northborough Music Program strong by replacing Mr. Ferguson with a full-time teacher. This program just really meant a lot to me, and so many others. It made me who I am, and I want, I want all the future students to have the same opportunities I have, and I want to keep the program as strong as it has been, and preserve it for future people. I don't have much to add, to be honest, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thanks.
Through the chair.
Here's this going on.
Through the chair.
I have a form for Northborough, and I'd like to call Northborough to order.
Thank you. It is 6:40.
Okay. So our next business is actions on the minutes to.
We do these all together, or are you going to plan on doing them one at a time?
I'm going to do them all together.
You can just do it all together, the only, just for the last one.
Last one, I'll leave. Leave that off. So I move the Region to include the minutes of combined open meeting minutes of March 20th, 2019. Combined special open meeting minutes of April 10th, 2019. The combined special open meeting minutes of May 9th, 2019.
Second for the Region.
Could I make the same motion for Southborough?
Second.
Make the same motion for Northborough.
Okay. All those in favor? Do we have any comments? Sorry. Yeah, we, Kelly let me know that she, for May 9th meeting, that we had for the, one of them that she had an edit on it.
She's not here to make it.
Okay. It wasn't an edit, it was a hypo. It was a, not, something that was misreported on the May 9th ones. Which one was this one? The combined special minutes of May 9th for the open minutes. We have one of the motions that says that she abstained, and she actually opposed. I don't know if we want to change that. Or check, or check the tape to make sure that's accurate.
Or we can, we can hold the minutes.
Hold the minutes. Hold the minutes, yeah. That's a vote.
Or if there's anyone else who has personal knowledge of that, I mean, I think we can, someone here can make that.
What was it?
If you want to make that on.
Can you remember that meeting? Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's accurate.
All right.
She did.
So that's my only suggestion, if someone else is here wanting to make the motion.
I can propose that change.
Okay.
I was present at the meeting, and present here, so.
Okay.
So it's page two.
Yes.
Bottom of page two. It goes through the motions.
Yep.
And it says Mrs. Gannett abstained. It should be Mrs. Gannett opposed.
She opposed.
So then I'll change my motion for Northborough to accept with a correction.
I.
I changed my motion for the Region to accept the correction.
Second for the Region.
Change my motion for Southborough to accept with correction.
Second for Southborough.
It's all the same people, right?
And we're in Union to.
And we're in Union to.
Do you need the Union?
I'll move for the Union.
Second.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All opposed?
Our next business is the NSPAC.
The next one, the next, because I had the executive session has to do. I move that the combined executive session minutes of May 9th, 2019 be approved and retained for, moved for the, for the Region.
Second for the Region. So move for Southborough?
Second for Southborough.
Second for Northborough.
Second for the Union. Okay. So we need a roll call then?
Yeah.
Master?
Yes.
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 Okay. Started?
So our next action is the NSPAC presentation.
Oh, thanks.
Good evening. I'm Liz Nolan, NSPAC's president, and I'm happy to be here tonight to share what we have done this year. Unfortunately, our other officers cannot make tonight for various reasons. So our long-term member, former officer, group resource historian, and technical assistant Christine Cobb is helping me out. It's been a busy and productive year. Special Education Parent Advisory Councils, otherwise known as CPACs, are state mandated advisory groups. The mission includes planning, developing, and evaluating the district's special education programs that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. NSPAC represents families in the three districts. Currently, there are 793 students on IEPs and 423 on 504 plans. We continue to provide ongoing educational programs, provide support and resources to members, and assist with problem solving. We act as a channel to the student support services for members, provide networking opportunities for our families who are navigating the complicated and often confusing world of special education, social services, medical care, and community inclusion. And we develop partnerships with other CPACs to expand benefits to our members. We have regular meetings throughout the academic year. The Student Support Services Team, our administration, has been able to attend our meetings to discuss areas of concern, share updates, or present on a topic of interest. In the fall, we introduced the Student Support Services Team to our members. It's really important for parents, especially the new ones, to know the face behind the names. Secondary transition is a topic that many parents need more information on, and Monique Clodier, who is a transition coordinator at the high school, was our speaker in February. How transition plans are developed and resources that are available to help in that process will continue to be part of our discussions and communications next year. In April, our presentation topic was about the upcoming extended school year, and last week, Greg Martineau was our guest. Our discussion brought up some really good topics as we move forward into next year. One of our key goals this year was to bring more awareness to NSPAC. A lot of people didn't know that we exist, and we want to make sure that everybody who is in the special education community knows that we are there as a resource to them. We updated our brochure, and that was included in the district annual procedural safeguard mailing in the fall. And in addition, all schools had copies to distribute to families who are new to the IEPs or our 504 plans. A new logo was designed. Our website was updated and cleaned up. Our bylaws from 2004 were updated. Volunteers were present at school open houses in the fall. We partnered with the Northborough Library, who did a great display with our, in October, for Dyslexia Awareness Month. They also helped us coordinate an author event for us, and will continue to bring awareness to their special needs parenting section, and we also hope to do the same with Southborough Library. We are in the process of writing an NEF grant to update the selection of disability awareness books for K through eight school libraries, and we will do the same following the SEF grant cycle. Communication is key on so many levels, so we continue to communicate with our members and all parents through electronic backpack flyers, Facebook posts, including PTOs and SOS, District One calls, having our events and meetings included on the district calendar, sending out group emails, keeping our website up to date, submitting press releases, and using community news outlets. It is important for our members to have the opportunities to network and seek support. The informal group Friends of Special Education in Northborough-Southborough has held an evening social and a holiday event, and we hope to see more of those casual meetups. It is important for us as a CPAC, for, as leaders, to network, and we do that through building a working relationship with area CPACs, so we can share info and events with one another. We are also a part of a regional CPAC leader group, and our membership with Mass PAC continues to be a great resource for us. We were able to increase the number of speakers we had this year on topics of great interest to our members, including Brendan Mayer of ADHD Essentials, who had an excellent turnout; author Michael Delman, in conjunction with the Northborough Library, who spoke about his book, which focuses on building executive function skills; author Deborah Vlock, who spoke about parenting children with mental health challenges; Northborough Family Youth Services Director presented on self-care for parents and caregivers; Executive Director and founder of Decoding Dyslexia, Nancy Dugan, was also presenting on a workshop on reading goals, and this was a very well-attended event as well. Our annual basic rights presentation through the Federation of Children with Special Needs was also held in the spring. Our biggest event of the year is the Go the Distance Recognition Night, and this year was our ninth year to hold the event. Forty-one district staff members and community members were recognized, some receiving more than one nomination. Christine Cobb and Deborah Roberts have worked on this event for so many years, so I thank them for their work. Looking ahead to next year, our officers have a few new faces. Katie Quarles, who was our treasurer, stepped down, but we want to thank her for all she did, and for all the input as an officer she gave us this year. Alyssa DeGon will be moving up the ranks and be co-president with me. Veronica Frada will continue in her role as vice president. New to the communications coordinator duties is Heather Baer, and hopefully, we will find someone to take the role of recording secretary for Alyssa, so she can fully transition out of that role. Also new to the board is Johanna Shiner, who will be taking over as treasurer. Our wish list for next year includes, we want to continue to have invested, involved special education reps from the school committees. We hope that all members are following us on Facebook, joining our email list, and viewing our website often. Thanks to those of you who did attend some of our workshops or meetings throughout the year, and we hope to diversify our meeting schedule and times to increase attendance, and hope that works better for some of you to join us. We would like more communication with the school committee as it relates to special education policy and budget. The continued support of the district with the annual Mass PAC membership and help with printing needs is appreciated. We will be looking at how to overall increase attendance at our meetings, events, and presentations. And we would like to continue to present at school committee meetings like this. And also, we'd like to see Student Support Services present more regularly as part of your meetings. We did conduct our annual survey, but unfortunately, we only received 30 submissions. This shows us that NSPAC needs a way to directly communicate with parents of special education students through Student Support Services, so information can be more efficiently distributed. So we are hoping that the district IT department. So we are hoping that the district IT department is able to extract the email addresses of our group of parents for Student Support Services. And this will allow us to forward communications about meetings and events through that channel. As discussed with Greg at our meeting last week, it makes more sense for our survey to also include questions from the district, as it would make the feedback more comprehensive. Executive functioning skills, social skills, and ADHD were also areas of concern with parents brought up on the survey. Mostly, parents of first and second graders completed the survey. And mostly, parents with kids on IEPs completed the survey versus those on 504 plans. Other highlights from the survey, parents feel that teams are proactive at the elementary level. The district has dedicated staff and special education support staff and feel positive about the academic support in high school learning district, centers, learning centers. Students do not feel like just a number. Overall, better communication and transparency was pretty dominant as an area of improvement, even with the small data collection. So this comes up frequently at meetings. Examples include better website info for Student Support Services to include program information in one place where parents can inform themselves of what is available, whether that be the information about ESY program, language-based classroom availability, or programs like Castle or Rise. Executive function skills support continues to be part of many conversations and the need of a consistent program that can benefit all students. Dyslexia support using evidence-based, explicit, multisensory instructing, instruction, and certified instructors and sensitive, sensitivity training on social emotional needs were also noted as areas of improvement. NSPAC was cited as a positive resource for parents and for us to continue with various speakers and presentations. It was noted that improvements can be made on meeting times, childcare options, and more community outreach and family-based meetups. There are several ways to connect with us, by signing up for our emails, following us on Facebook, viewing our website, or emailing us directly. And all that information is on our website as well. So that was our year. Any questions?
I have one about the survey submissions. Do you recall, say, for the last two years, how this year compared in submissions, about the same, a lot less, a lot more?
No. I can't remember from two years ago, but I know last year, we had probably like 150.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
Again, I think we just need a better way of getting it out to the families that it involves. Yeah. I know last year, it was Christine Johnson had put it out through one of her one calls. But we also got a lot of input from people not on a 504 plan or IEP. So a lot of their information, although some of it was interesting because they had a lot of concerns that special ed parents did too, a lot of it didn't pertain to them for, you know, the survey input. But ideally, it would be great to be able to reach directly to the special ed parents.
Right. Thank you.
I have a question about the survey also. A bullet about sensitivity training. Do you know what that's around?
That was a fill-in answer. I, I think it's, oh, yes, I think it's, I think a lot of it to do with students, for other students who have disabilities. Yeah. Yeah.
Could you share this with us electronically?
The survey results? Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely. I'll send it to the chairs, I guess, if I know the new ones. Yes.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. And I know that a year ago, we had talked about how it is hard for parents to go to meetings and, you know, schedules are busy. I think someone had mentioned the potential of recording some of the meetings. Was that, was that a possibility this year? Do you think that that would pose a problem?
You mean, recording as in cable or the access?
Or, I don't know, if you could Facebook Live?
It has come up in conversation. So that's something we can kind of revisit.
Some, some of it, yeah. I mean, some of it might be the sensitivity of who's in the audience for some of the subject matter. You know, some parents might not want the general public or anybody who could be viewing this video to know, oh, I was at a presentation for whatever. So I think that at one time, oh, sorry, that at one time was a problem. And we just never really figured it out. I don't know.
It is.
Any other questions?
I would just like to commend you as somebody who's attended a number of meetings and my schedule changed. I really thought that it was a robust community where resources were being shared very active and not all towns benefit from such a group. So I just really wanted to commend you for that.
Well, thank you very much. And thanks for coming to some of our meetings while you could. A lot of our meetings also, you know, goes around the schedule of the officers who have to be there. So we'll try to work in some evening ones as well this coming year, because we do have some people, officers who can't make it during the day as well. But, you know, we've tried both, and it doesn't really increase attendance all that much because you get into the evenings and you have childcare issues and, you know, spouses who are traveling and, you know, they can't come. So it's a different set of issues why they don't attend. But we try, we'll try to make it a happy medium.
So on behalf of the district, I also would like to thank you for NSPAC's work, positive approach. I think you brought a lot of value add to our work. I think the keynote, the speaker series has been outstanding. And I just want to thank you for all of your work and the positive approach NSPAC has taken.
Thank you.
The past couple of years. So thank you.
Thanks. We continue, we want to continue that. The speaker series definitely, you know, we hit upon a lot of topics that parents brought to our attention that they wanted more information on. So we hope to set up the schedule ahead of time, so everybody has that, and we'll share it with you as well. Oh, I do have a copy of our brochure that we gave out at the beginning of the year, so it'll be sort of updated. But just so that you have the basic information, we can pass that around.
The website.
How to reach us. It's also on the website. You can click on it as well. So thank you. Have a good summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you. And I think that you guys come back in the fall to, to present again. I said, "Thank you," and I think that you guys come back in the fall again. Do you guys do? Okay, perfect. All right, thank you. Our next is appointment of school physician.
So we're very fortunate to have Dr. Medina serve as our school physician. He has done amazing work, and we're so, so grateful to have him be with us. And we need a motion to reappoint Dr. Medina to serve as our district physician for the 2019, 2020 academic year. And although he's not in attendance, he, he will accept the appointment if approved. So we need a motion.
So move for Southborough and Region. And do we need Union? Southborough and Region then.
So move for Northborough.
Second for Southborough.
Second for Northborough.
Second for Region.
Okay, so wait one second. All right, so Joan?
For Northborough.
For Northborough, okay. And then who seconded for Northborough?
I did.
Uh, okay. And then Southborough was what?
I moved.
Paul and Couture, is that right? Okay. And then Region is Paul and? Thank you. And we don't need Union. Okay. All those in favor? I guess. I think he's happy. And our next business item is the start time update.
So as you know, we've been engaged in examining and studying start time for the past several years. I think it's been five or six. And this year, we formed a start time task force to continue that work. We have 33 members representing the task force. And I think we have great representation across all three districts. I think that is a unique feature to this task force from the work that's been done in the past. It really represents Northborough, Southborough, and the region. We have parents, community members, educators, school leaders, school committee members. Kathleen Pletchko is the liaison, and Jennifer Primack is also on the task force. We've had two meetings this year, May 23rd and June 12th. And at the meeting, we really made sure that there was clarity and purpose of what the task force was charged to do. We also looked at the past work, so that we respected the work that was done, and we weren't starting from square one. And we're very fortunate that a lot of great work has taken place to date. We actually took 33 members, and we actually formed subgroups. We have logistics, community outreach, research and data, and scenario and options. And each group has a task to do some more research and study around those areas. And they'll be meeting over the summer. And then we'll be reconvening early in September to continue the work as a larger committee. Also, this year, we had school bus consultants do some work on analysis and think about scenarios for, starting later. We are still waiting for the final report from SBC. And we're hoping to get it by the end of this week, early next week. So we'll be an agenda item at the combined meeting, or propose it to be an agenda item at the combined meeting in September, so we can review the outcome of that report. I think, I think it's important to note that legislation has also been filed to study start time later. And it's been forwarded to the Joint Commission on Education. So I think that's something that we want to keep an eye on. And also, two, like districts in terms of regional school districts have also voted to move their start times, Lincoln-Sudbury and Dover-Sherburns. So it's actually some good proof of concept in terms of regional schools actually being successful in doing this, because it is a bit more complicated. So we're off to a good start. I think we have the right committee, the right people, the right task force. And I look forward to moving the work forward and providing an update at the September combined meeting.
Since Lincoln-Sudbury and Dover-Sherburn are doing it, is it possible to talk to those two systems to find out exactly how they went about it? Or if buses, what they're doing bus-wise?
So one of the charges of the subgroups will be to actually reach out to schools that have been successful to learn what worked, what didn't work, how did they make it happen in their districts? And I think one thing we've learned is that every district is a bit unique. So what might work in Westborough or Lincoln-Sudbury or Dover, it's great to hear, but it also might not work in our district.
Right.
But it's important to reach it.
Right, okay.
Could you talk a little more about that legislation? What was that about?
So it was, the legislation, legislation was to study, was to really understand the science around starting school later. I don't think it's going to align with the timing of how we want to move forward. But I think it's just, it's good to keep an eye on the work that's been, is moving forward at the legislative level. And it's more to study the topic. And it's, it's HD 2810, if you want to look it up.
Is that state or federal?
You're talking state?
Yeah, state.
Thank you. So we'll put that on the Jennifer September then. Okay. Personnel update?
So for distribution, we have Rhoda Webb, who will be getting her work as interim assistant superintendent, July 1. Becky Pellegrino, again, Director of Finance and Operations, July 1. And then Oliver Bass, who's from Rhoda.
And our next is a superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, so Paul and I get to do our last official duties as outgoing chairs. We were just commiserating over that, but anyway, we're going to do a tag team. And so this is evaluation, is like summary of everyone's comments. And it, it, it puts together all the pie charts and so forth. So we had 11 respondents, and that, one person equals about 9% on the chart. So the first goal was her professional, Christine's professional practice goal of to develop and implement a tool that calculates a clear and purposeful program of mentoring our administrative leadership team. And so 72.7% of respondents indicated it was met expectations, with another 18.2 for exceeded, and then one thought there was some progress. So the comment, so basically, she met or exceeded the goal. The proposed mentoring program appears to be a step in the right direction, a great way for future and new administration to have mentors to help with success of their, in their new roles. And I look forward to seeing the implementation of it. District improvement goal number one. Finalize the facility rates and language policy and practices across three districts. Review the transportation scheduling and routing, and finalize the organizational chart across all three districts to reflect adequate and highly qualified staffing. 45.5% rated that Christine exceeded expectations. 45.5 met expectations, and 9.1 some progress. All three of these reviews were undertaken thanks to the initiative of Superintendent Johnson. Her business acumen is top-notch. It is important to have facility rental rates and school lunch programs looked at from outside consulting companies. Christine has done a great job in getting the information we need to start the conversations to implement some of the ideas that come out of the evaluation. Her consideration and ability to engage all stakeholders, thoroughness, and attention to detail is to be admired. The organizational growth chart represents a huge improvement over the prior organizational chart. It provides organizational depth and improved workload distribution. Again, so we look forward to seeing how it improves the functioning of and workplace stress level at central office. And the district improvement goal number two. Propose safety upgrades and budget consistent with survey results in current school safety readiness practices and protocols. 63.6% of respondents felt Christine exceeded expectation in this area. 27.3% met expectations and 9.1 significant progress. Superintendent Johnson's response to school safety has been systematic and thorough. Christine has worked hard with the two towns' police chiefs as well as administrators to help ensure the safety of our kids. Her collaborative skills were beneficial in securing the approval of the school security upgrades warrant article at Northborough Town Meeting. The approval for the installation of new cameras and safety programs throughout all of our schools helps support the overall school readiness protocols. In addition, the public is invited to learn about the Alice program, and many express gratitude for having the opportunity to learn about keeping safe in public spaces.
My turn. District improvement goal three. Develop a district-wide administrative leadership feedback surveys based on a 360 model across, I'm not sure what, and exit interview protocols and practices for all positions by aligning these with the organizational chart. Ratings here, 36.4 exceeded expectations, 54.5 met, and 9.1 some progress. Comments. In order to make improvements to our schools, it is important to get input from the staff and faculty that work in the schools. This is a great tool to provide valuable feedback in a consistent, structured, and objective manner. All stakeholders were included in the process, which will hopefully result in confidence in the results. It will provide valuable feedback that will improve teaching and learning. District improvement goal four. The superintendent will arrange for a training on interest-based bargaining for school committee, associate, association members, and bargaining units to prepare for contract negotiations in fiscal year 2020. This, the ratings for this one, 45.5% exceeded expectations, 54.5% met. And that's it. Comments, Superintendent Johnson's proactive approach to set up our district for success is exemplified with this goal. It is important for all involved to understand the interest-based bargaining process. Having been through the process many times, Superintendent Johnson understands how important it is for the negotiation team to get trained and/or refreshed in the materials. Student improvement goal, support and identify instructional practices and resources to align with the new state accountability system of measuring student growth and achievement. Here, 36.4% said she exceeded expectations, 63.6% says she met expectations. Comments, this multi-year project is complete and provides a system to respond to evolving curriculum changes. Back to Lynn.
Okay. The next section is on the performance standards and these standards are what we actually report back to the Department of Education and Secretary, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the, so this, this section is really important. So superintendent's performance rating for standard number one, instructional leadership. The educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. 45.5% rated exemplary, 45.5% proficient and 9.1% needs improvement. Superintendent Johnson and her team have devoted countless hours on various projects such as Atlas Curriculum Mapping, Instructional Rounds, 360 Reviews, all designed to promote learning and growth for both students and staff. The introduction of instructional rounds puts our district at the forefront in this area and is being embraced by schools at all levels, elementary, middle and high school. It is an example of how Superintendent Johnson is constantly seeking new ways to improve the education of our students and empower teachers to take an active role and bring their ideas forward. It is great to listen to the presentations throughout the year from the different departments and witness the enthusiasm they have. Superintendent's performance rating for standard number two, management and operations. Promotes the learning and growth of all students and success of all staff by ensuring a staff, a safe, efficient and effective learning environment using resources to implement appropriate curriculum, staffing and scheduling. 54.5 rated exemplary, 36.4 proficient and 9.1 needs improvement. This is an area of strength of Superintendent Johnson. She does a tremendous job in the budget preparation process and works well with both towns. She understands the stakeholder issues and helps solve them while still having a successful outcome. She has always stayed true to being educationally sound but fiscally responsible. She has overseen implementation of new financial systems that are a significant step forward versus the past and seen us through challenging times after our finance director resigned by making effective use of outsourced service providers and finding an effective interim finance director. Superintendent Johnson's approach to hiring is exemplary. When an opening occurs, she often uses it, uses it as an opportunity to assess whether a different approach may serve the district better and often finds that new approach. One example is replacing the director of technology with a position more focused on how to use technology in the classroom, a move that promises to help teachers make more effective use of the technology that we've spent years bringing into our schools. Organizational restructuring and technology-based safety improvements were areas of particular strength this evaluation period. It is also true that it is impossible to be 100% perfect with no room for improvement. Superintendent Johnson has laid the groundwork for success.
Superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and community engagement. Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organization and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and the district. Ratings here, 45.5% exemplary, same percentage proficient and 9.1% improvement. Comments, Superintendent Johnson is quite active in the community, attending numerous events, hosting forums and generally making herself readily available to engage in conversations with community members. She always rises to the occasion when issues come up that are a concern for the school, community or a specific group. For example, when faced with difficult busking situations, she did not shy away from engagement. Superintendent's performance rating for standard four, professional culture. Promotes success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture of reflective practice, high expectation and continuous training. Ratings here, 36.4% exemplary, 54.5% proficient, 9.1% needs improvement. Comments, Superintendent Johnson has done a great job managing the 10 schools and three districts in our one community. Here again, an impressive accomplishment in this area was the implementation of instructional rounds. It has great potential to improve teaching and learning in the classroom, providing a structured method for teachers to be reflective in their practice. It is one of many tools Christine and her team have implemented to improve learning in the classroom. Christine is always prepared for every meeting. She is open and respectful of all input and feedback, but is not afraid to address issues as they arise, as she demonstrated on a few occasions this year. With everything in life, there is always room for improvement and growth.
And that defeats the evaluation process and I thank everyone who concluded and submitted their goals, their evaluations on the goals and the standards. It's really what the superintendents need and deserve, everyone's participation in this process. That one, one of our, we have our two, the three. We do budgets, we evaluate and hire the superintendent and we do policy. So these are our three responsibilities we need to, so I thank you for your participation.
Is she going to talk?
Yes.
John? I'd also like to thank Paul and Lynn for putting this process together, doing it in past years. I know it's not easy to get done and to give us the good reminders that we got to get ours in. And I would just like to commend both Paul and Lynn on the new addition of doing the pie chart. And I think that is really very beneficial for us to see. So thank you for your hard work and your diligence and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, but the Google Doc thing made it kind of easy.
Oh. Just take credit.
Just take credit, take credit.
You deserve it. Thanks.
Okay, so we have one more thing before we adjourn.
Yes, any new business on the other. So every time there's a transition in superintendents, the three school committees must formally appoint the superintendent to serve on the Aspen Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. So I move for the region to appoint effective July 1st, 2019, Greg Martino, superintendent to the Aspen Valley Collaborative Board of Directors.
Some move for Southborough?
Some move for Northborough.
This is going to be too fast for me right now. Do you know why? Because I can't count the lines down. All right, Roger, you did it.
Second for Southborough.
Second for region.
Second for Northborough.
Okay. I'll just check it off. All those in favor? So our next scheduled combined meeting is Wednesday, September 18th. So if there's anything that we want to put on the agenda for next, I know we want to put music. If there's anything else, do you guys want to email me or Greg and let us know? I'm good. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn the union, Northborough and Southborough.
Move for Southborough to adjourn?
Move for Northborough.
Move for the union?
I'll second for union and Southborough.
Second for Northborough.
And do I have Southborough? Do we need one more? Is that right? Great, all those in favor? Awesome, how about awesome summary, guys? Okay, so we are back. So the first action is the action on minutes.
I will move for the, to approve the minutes for the open meeting of May 15th, 2019, the minutes of the emergency meeting of March 7th, 2016, the minutes of action on the subcommittee meeting, minutes of the audit subcommittee meeting of April 9th, 2019, capital planning subcommittee meeting of December 17th, 2018, the operational budget subcommittee meeting of February 21st, 2019, the policy development subcommittee meeting of March 12th, 2019, policy development subcommittee meeting of April 10th, 2019, and the student advisory subcommittee meeting of October 17th, 2018.
Second.
So all those in favor?
I move to, to vote to approve and release the executive session minutes of March 7th, 2016 and to release the retained executive session minutes of September 8th, 2008.
Second. Okay, so this requires a rule call. Kathleen, you want to start?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. So our second is educational policy.
So we have a overnight field trip application from our music department. And Dr. Walsh, I don't know if you want to speak to it briefly?
So the, it is, as Craig said, it's an overnight field trip. It is something that we run every couple of years and what's really fun about this trip, as well as the trip we ran last year, a very, very similar trip down to New York, is that the New York trip is all encompassing. Like all the students can go, they do a lot of fundraising. It was approved last year, students had an exceptional journey. We work with a tour company that specializes in providing our students the opportunity to perform in very unique spectacular venues where they would never have the opportunity. This field trip, this overnight trip is now a subgroup of that where students are going to be performing and it's a little higher level play so that the students that are taking music to the next level in their high school career can now play at an additional, really exciting venue. And they get a lot of historical information, they do a lot of fundraising, they start as soon as it's approved, they would do the fundraising anyways. For all of our music parents, they'll have an account to help set off the cost of the trip. We do have money set aside to support students who, you know, may need additional funding so that it can be open for them. But it really is a wonderful event and they've done it in the past and the goal is to kind of cycle it through. So now we're up for this year's cycle to allow some of our more advanced students to the same opportunity.
I would move that we vote to approve the music department overnight field trip to San Francisco, April 17th to 21st, 2020.
Second. Okay. Any questions or, John?
The dates of this, which is April 17th to 21st, is that spring vacation?
It is and it isn't. They do miss, depending on the flights, which they haven't actually booked the flight, they may miss Friday or a little bit of Thursday. But the goal is actually to try to move it towards spring break so they miss the least amount of school. So it's the week right before spring break and then spring break.
Okay. And we have, we have faculty members that will be attending, correct?
Correct.
So will these days count, will they have to take them as personal days or will they get dispensation for these days?
So days in which faculty members are on a field trip that's been approved by school committee, it's considered, we code it as professional development so it doesn't impact them negatively or field trip code, depending on if they're aide or educator or something like that. But no, it does not negatively impact them if the field trip is approved by school committee.
Okay.
I think S.K. scenario, they would miss half a day on Friday.
That's what I would want.
That's the hope and the plan. If flights are booked and are, were able to arrange it appropriately, so.
Okay. So then that would be my follow-up question is, we always know the airlines have delays, especially if you're coming from, you know, maybe from the West Coast, could be inclement weather or something. So what happens if their flight is delayed? Is there contingency plans for those staff or students coming back? Do they know they're not going to be penalized?
So the benefit of, so there's two parts to that. The benefit of working with the tour company is they put the plans in place to make sure our students get to where they need to be. Regarding faculty and students, we would not penalize them in any way. And with, you know, the opportunity of having this approved so far in advance, we put things in place so work isn't missed and students can prepare appropriately.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes. Paul's in favor? All right, so next is new business. See, oh, so, sorry. So the next is the draft for our, the subcommittees. So I've heard from a few people, if anyone else wants to stay on the same committee, start being a new committee, let us know. The one, do you want to talk a little bit?
Yes, so the one subcommittee liaison that we need to sign are the payroll and warrants. The state did vote to approve that only one person needs to be the signature on the warrants. However, it's Christine's recommendation and my recommendation that we stay with two for two reasons. First, it's a great opportunity for us to interact with school committee members as they come to central office. And then secondary, I think it's important to check and balance and another set of eyes on these very important documents. So I'd recommend, although we can only have one person, that we have, we stay with our past practice and keep two. Because warrants are signed over the summer on payroll, we would need to assign folks this evening.
So what is the hours in the central office in the summer?
6:00 AM to, 8 to 4.
Okay.
But we can also accommodate.
I would be like the emergency person.
So I'll still do it, but I just need, can we get like dates for when things have to be signed versus an email?
Yes.
Like 24 hours before, yeah. But since I live there, it's not, you know, it's easy.
And also, it's important to note that the process for having alternates is still in place. So if someone can't make it, we can have alternates assigned.
So, did I?
We can get.
Okay. So if anyone else, John?
I could be an alternate for the payroll warrants.
Same here. Hopefully we all can be.
All of you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Another question, if we want to put our name onto another committee, should we just see you afterwards or email it to you?
Yeah, or you can email it to me either way. Or fill out your sheet and just give it back to me or whatever.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys. The next is a superintendent's report to the committee.
At this time, I'd like to have Sarah give her principles report.
Thank you. It's, it's five pages, just prepare. Sorry. We've been busy. I just, I wanted to say thank you to the administrators who were here last month for me in my place. I think Nandi did a pretty amazing job. I watched it live, thank you for that. Jumping right in, Dr. Helen can speak more to this than I could, but I just wanted to thank Solar Jazz Festival for, once again, inviting the Jazz One Band back to perform. They really enjoy it. Mr. Vincent did a wonderful job promoting, coming out to see our students and supporting our students and being a part of a community. The students said they had a lot of fun, it was a great community event, our own faculty attended different portions of it, it was all day long, so thank you for the opportunity. Midway down through academics, I wanted to just make everyone aware of a wonderful thing we're trying to bring to Algonquin, it's Business Forward Females, BFFs. It's an opportunity through Corridor Nine and Networking in which we are going to take a program that's, I believe Westboro has done it, Shrewsbury did it last year, we want to bring it here to Algonquin, we're going to link it up with DECA and our National Honors Business Society, in which some of our female students will have the opportunity to network with female entrepreneurs, have conversations, follow up, run ideas by, practice mock interviews, make those really important connections. So Ms. Pappas has been working with me to get this going and that wouldn't happen without the support of Corridor Nine, so I wanted to say thank you for them. Down under activities and clubs, wonderful, wonderful work by Operation Tomahawk. I know it was featured in the Community Advocate about the Memorial Day Assembly. We're going to lose two of our Operation Tomahawk leaders that are enrolling and listing in the military. I believe, I believe Alan has already enlisted, so it's, it's a loss to Algonquin, but he really helped pave the way in what Operation Tomahawk does. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for running the club. They ran the Murph Challenge fundraiser, which was also a very positive event, it was over the weekend, we had some educators come out and actually participated in as well. I threw in some pictures there. Underneath that, I cannot believe how much the sophomore class has jammed in this year. And Mr. McDonald can maybe speak better to this than I can, but right up until almost the last week of school, they ran another car wash. They, they found a need that was in the community, they ran a car wash, they made the donation. It was the better of the two days that weekend and the community came out to support them. So I just commend the sophomore class, steering committee and all that they do. Our junior class upheld the tradition of providing the senior graduation rehearsal day breakfast. The seniors really enjoyed it, they took that time to take some mindfulness with each other and sign their yearbooks. Great opportunity. with each other and sign their yearbooks, great opportunity. As many of you know, graduation was a huge success. I'd like to say thank you to Leah Gramblattis, you guys have seen her artwork before, she produced the artwork that was on the cover of the program, and Ms. Shepherd put it together. And obviously, thank you to Sarvinigian, Ms. Flynn, Mr. McGowan, Ms. Capavo for a successful graduation, went off really, really well. On the second page, athletics, I'm going to save some of this. Mr. Moserino is trying to make it back here, we'll write in girls tennis play, so I don't want to do a spoiler alert, because I haven't gotten an update from him. But I did include some pictures, we had some wonderful adventures with our athletics during the spring season, there's some great updates in there, things have changed since then. Our boys tennis team made it right up until today, and they just lost today, so they're out, it was an amazing season, our girls tennis team went undefeated, they're playing today. For our T-Hawks of the Month, I just wanted to give a shout out to Edward Gostick, he started the rugby feeder program in Southborough. He used some of his Boy Scout work and established a program that's a feeder program, almost for Algonquin, because rugby is not that prevalent in our area, and we have a boys and girls rugby team here at Algonquin, so it's great that he took that initiative, and obviously, being, you know, a T-Hawk member of the month, he understands the importance of athletics. We know that Mr. Hausman was Unified Track and Field Coach of the Year. Now, we can add a cross-country coach, Mr. Nate Utaro and Mr. Pat Galvin, both educators in the building, both earned Mass State Track Coaches Association of the Year, wonderful coaches. It's so great to see when our educators connect with students outside of the classroom. It shows the positive connections that go with the work, the students perform both well in and out of the classroom, our track athletes went on for, I believe they had nationals and did very, very well. Mike has some updates about the Boosters golf outing. I would like to say that the Algonquin administrative team, we're told it's the first time the administrative teams come out to support, but Boosters does so much for the school, that I think we gave it a pretty good go. I mean, it's golf, we had the highest score, proud of that. We worked for that, there's a couple extra shots in there for it, gorgeous day, they met their fundraiser mark, they said they had over one hundred and fifteen golfers there, it was the most they've ever had, and it was great to see a lot of the educators and local community members come out and support Boosters. And I believe Christine won one of the raffle baskets, so that was exciting, so it was always good to see that. For department news, I'm jumping down to student support and English language learners. I want to showcase our Unified Singers. They have continued to blossom. They perform at all of our Unified events, they perform at all of our major school events, they did the, they were our guest, featured guest singers in our Pops Night, they opened for the Algonquin Games. Wanted to make sure to thank Marie and her team, I snuck in some great pictures there for hosting Algonquin Games here at Algonquin. It is an amazing event that Marie and her team put on, and by having it here, all the high school students can come out and they can line the track, they make a great spirit tunnel, it's something we do for our Unified Track and Field, so it's great to see it continue. Under Applied Arts and Technology, I wanted to thank Mr. Jim Polito for coming back out, he does some great work with our Applied Arts Department. He linked up with Mr. Kalman this year, they use the green screen, there's a great phenomenal video where the students all link together their new segments, really practice what they learn in the classroom. Ms. Ferrer just sent that out. Under Fine Arts, our spring improv was sold out both nights, which is excellent, I am getting text messages from Mr. Moserino, he's got to be close by. We had twenty-seven students in the cast, six house band musicians and students for lights and sound. Why I showcase drama right now is, in the last two years, we have made sure to offer a very distinct drama opportunity for our students, from the musical that we see in the fall, to the competition in the winter, to the improv in the spring. You know, it's a lot, like if, for our athletes out there, it's the difference between cross-country, indoor track and outdoor track, all running, but very different for that individual. So it just gives that student their niche to really hone in their skills and take it to the next level. We're all aware of the successes of Pops Night, I tried to get in a picture of some of our seniors to showcase their work. Under Social Studies, our ninth grade unlevelled courses, you've heard Ms. Burns speak this year, very, very successful model for local schools that come out and go visit us. I thought it was really great that at the end of the year, they took the time to celebrate their students, they had various awards for them, and whenever you can have the opportunity to celebrate a student's academic and social emotional successes, is a wonderful event for a student's high school career. They went above and beyond with the ninth grade unlevelled work. AP World Class presented their Gains Night, where they go and make global awareness issues. We had over two hundred guests in the library, it was jam-packed when they did their presentations, and they practiced on all of the students in the cafeteria, so you couldn't, you couldn't get by them. It was great, without understanding the petition or what they were doing, so really created that student awareness and that parent awareness that continues the conversations outside of school hours. Under Guidance, our Scholas Awards Night, we had ninety-five thousand dollars in scholarships, excellent community support, as usual. Thank you to Ms. Connery and Guidance Team, and Ms. Cummings for hosting the event and putting it on, as well as our department chairs for coming out. We had four hundred and eight students take eight hundred and nine AP exams, it's a huge undertaking that Guidance works collaboratively with the school to put on, and our students do exceptionally, exceptionally well. And recently, because we like to jam-pack everything in and celebrate our students, we just did our Junior Book Awards, where we had over thirty juniors in the library, and we celebrated each of their successes and honored them with various book awards. On the next page, I thought it was a wonderful opportunity that English and Ms. Beatar, Department Chair for English, offered all of Algonquin faculty, they had us present to them various nonfiction texts that we had read and wanted to suggest for some summer reading, and then the English department went through and kind of reviewed all of those books and came together with forty selections. So if your book is selected, you can kind of then connect with the students who've read the book, great way to foster summer reading, great way to foster connections with students. There's so much that can be learned about each other in a book club or a book group, so this is happening in Algonquin. For PE and Health, I snuck in a great picture of archery, a little comical scene there is that the unlevelled big group wanted to do their award ceremony out on the fields, but we were doing archery, so we had to, we had to move that around a little bit, so cover that up. And then, last but not least, for administration, I just wanted to give a shout out and best wishes to Ms. Taunta Donato. This is her last official school committee, she's been with Algonquin seventeen years. I know that she said the last two years have been pretty inspiring and joyful for her. So every time I talk about Michelle going on to one of her new opportunities, I call it terribly awesome. It is terrible for Algonquin, and phenomenally awesome for Michelle. She has been a wonderful coworker, peer, friend, had all of the historical answers that we needed when the admin team came on, really offered some great guidance, so she is going to be a huge loss to us, but a great, awesome adventure for her.
Thank you.
A lot.
A lot. If I say jam-packed, but we do.
So as far as, you're women's, the Business Forward Females, so if people who are not in the National Business Society or DECA, can they do it?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's kind of where we're starting, because we have a captive audience.
Right.
I'm not supposed to say that, but we do, and then the goal is to continue to expand it.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And congratulations on your new job.
Thank you.
You've been a fixture here for a long time.
Yes, I actually started my teaching career here seventeen years ago, and just will always be proud to call myself a T-Hawk.
Well, you've been fantastic to all the kids and parents, so thank you very much for your service.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Walsh and Andy and Tim, this is a fantastic team, I've been honored for the past two years to be a part of, and I will definitely miss them. But I know they will continue on fighting for the students and student learning and continuing the excellence at Algonquin.
Right.
So I'd just like to add a couple comments, if I may.
Sure.
So I think you began your career in two thousand and two here.
Yes.
And you came with a wealth of experience in finance and background in fifteen years, and you brought that practical application to the work.
Yes.
And I think it was greatly appreciated, and then you grew in the ranks and you became the Department Chair, and then from there, you became Assistant Principal. And every interaction that I've seen you interact with students or faculty and staff has been respectful, you always put students first, and I'm always amazed, you seem to have a smile on your face whenever I see you, no matter what's happening. So I just, you will be greatly missed, you are the historian, you're going to leave behind a great legacy, and I wish you the best in your future endeavors, because I know this is something that you've been working toward and really are passionate about, so, and I have no doubt that you'll be successful. So thank you, and you're always welcome back. You can probably find a space for you.
Thank you.
So also, next on the Superintendent's Report is enrollments. And then also, the FY nineteen Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, as of May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and I can tell you that the finance folks are very busy right now, closing out PRN, and they're doing a great job. And we are where we should be this time of year, and we need a vote to approve until audited.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
And also in your packet is the FY nineteen Revenue Report, as of May thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, again, I think the high school did a great job collecting the fees, and we're tracking where we should be at this time of year. And again, we need a vote to approve until audited.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Okay. So our next order of business is the turf field update.
So we had a great meeting with the Boosters, they arranged for us to connect with Shrewsbury High School. They have two folks at Shrewsbury High School who serve as coordinators of development and volunteer programs, they're part-time, and over the past two years, most of their work has been to fundraise, seek donations, look for advertising, to create a new turf field for Shrewsbury High School and track. And they were successful in raising one point eight million dollars in, to bring the project to fruition. So our role at the meeting was to learn what they did well, and to think about, you know, moving forward in terms of athletics at Algonquin High School and the facilities, and to see if, you know, the Boosters, what the Boosters can do to help kind of move that endeavor forward. It's been a conversation for many years with Boosters, I think back five or six years ago, they did some plans and work with Gale Associates to have schematic drawings and designs, and then I think it's been an ongoing conversation that's recently resurfaced with Boosters. So Tom Spataro is present, the President of Boosters, and the Vice President, Mike Hodges, Rob Berger, who was past president and a Boosters member, Jennifer Olivera, a Boosters fundraising coordinator, Paul Desmond was there, and Kathleen Pletchko, Jim Jollack and Rebecca, and me, and Mike Moserino and Kathy Key were planning on attending, but they were appropriately at a girls lacrosse tournament game, so. And Paul, I don't know if you want to add any, anything that you learned from the meeting?
It was kind of unbelievable, I mean, they did, from, from project inception to actually opening the field in like two years, raising almost two million dollars, they had almost zero help from the town, except for, was it a couple hundred thousand dollars for the track that had already been set aside, so. I mean, it's going to be a different situation for us, I think, because, well, we don't know the numbers yet, but it's doubtful that we'll be able to do it without help from either town. But it was still encouraging, I think, that they raised that much money that quickly, you know, Shrewsbury's, well, I was going to say it's bigger, I don't know if it's bigger than Southborough and Northborough combined, so. And they had a lot of good ideas for just different ways to do it, from small dollar amounts, they did a brick thing, you know, where you name a brick and they paint them out somewhere. They sponsored almost everything you can think of, I mean, the start line to the triple jump or whatever, you know, it was unbelievable. You know, it was a good mix of high dollar amounts for like the field, naming rights on the field, and smaller ones like the bricks and other things, but, you know, there's lots to chew on.
I think one takeaway for me was that they had two folks at central office, part-time, who really led this work and championed this work, and I think, I think that they also acknowledged that the success of this fundraising was largely in part because they had the people power to give it time and energy, and really focus and make sure there's clarity in messaging of why they were doing this, so.
It's good proof of concept. That was unbelievable. I mean, these two people were supposedly employees, they paid them fifteen thousand each, and they were supposed to be working, I forget, fifteen or twenty hours, but they were clearly working way more than that, and, you know, almost all on this.
They were two moms, right? Like, they weren't employees of the district? They became, right?
They were past PTO presidents in the community, and then they were recruited, I believe, by the Superintendent to serve in this capacity of fundraising, and they also have a Colonial Fund, which raises money for many different endeavors, so their role shifted to athletics and this particular project for the past two years.
For those who haven't seen the field, it is exceptional, you know, it is visibly inviting and very well done, clearly corporate sponsored, and you see that quite visible, but it's, the field is exceptional.
And most, I mean, even when we were in, where was the girls lacrosse game? Minichuk. Like, their field was unbelievable, you know, I mean, like, everyone's going that way, and I do, like, Kathleen was blown away by it, and I do think that you can find those moms or dads who have been involved within, like SOS or PTOs or whatever, that have kids coming here that would help. You know, I do, I think that there's, I think they're out there, I just think you have to, you know, get the, I'm not doing it. No one will say yes to me anymore, because I've framed my asking.
I think too, it's a very, it's a very large project, a complex project that involves, you know, two towns, a significant amount of money, and I love the fact that they raised through donations and advertising the money to support their work. So that's exciting, because when we talk about budget priorities and where things fall, and it will be an important conversation to put in the context of other priorities that we have as well, and how we can make it work.
So what are the next steps, then?
So we actually, I think, great, great question, we did not have a chance to kind of come back together with Boosters and really process what we, what we listened to.
So the next step is to?
So the next step is to come back together, I think, with Boosters and really process, you know, what we learned, and I think also, you know, having a conversation with the committees around, you know, where are we going, you know, what is the appetite to move forward with this, so, just doing some more study and learning and thinking about where we want to go with this.
So being new, is there a, since I've been on the committee, there's a lot of talk about the policy and moving forward, is there a concrete plan, or a, has there been a need study of what is needed? I'm not sure where we are.
So.
Sorry if this is redundant, I mean, I can.
So Boosters engaged in facility study six or seven years ago, so there's some schematic design drawings, there has been some talk around the Boosters taking an initiative and doing really a facilities use study, and really thinking about, you know, the possibilities in terms of our, you know, our athletic complex, not just, not just the track and the stadium, but the tennis courts and the fields, and softball, so a much more comprehensive design and feasibility study.
Thanks.
So when you talk about this, I know that when I served on the capital planning about two years ago, or three years ago, the Boosters came to one of the capital Subcommittee Meetings and presented the whole scope of the complex, about talking about, when you say the turf field, is that also they talked about the stadium seating, they talked about the press room, press box, because now we would have to be ADA compliant. So this is the whole scope of everything, just not the field, but surrounding, okay?
And I think one, one thing Shrewsbury did share with us is that they had a phased approach, so they, their designs and plans really encompassed a much larger project, and this was their first phase, was the track and the football field and the stadium. So I think, again, doing a feasibility study of the larger complex, and then deciding, is it even feasible? Like, is it, you know, what phases are feasible, would be a direction we might want to consider.
Okay.
Okay. So now that Mr. Mosserino's here.
Can I ask him a question first? What's, what happened?
Unfortunately, we went 0-2 today. Boys tennis lost to Brookline 5-0 in the state finals, and then girls tennis lost to Acton Box Bro, 4-1. So, girls tennis did finish, I believe it was 21-1, and the boys were at 20-3. So it was a great season to have both boys and girls, quite a unique season. I mean, unbelievable to have them both in the state finals, both won their districts. So it was a good way, although the results weren't there, it was an amazing season for both teams to make it that far, so. Yeah. So I wish I had better news coming in.
I think also it's important to note that, you know, Dr. Walsh mentioned, you know, coaches, and Julie Doyle is the girls' tennis coach.
Yes.
So I know every day she came in, she was very excited and very proud of the team.
It's a great team, great season. All of them were very positive to end because it can be tough having that first loss, especially being in the state finals, but they were all very positive at the end, realizing it was a great accomplishment, even though they didn't win the state finals. So it was, it was good. So I guess I'll give a little bit of a rundown of the spring season, other than the boys and girls tennis. I, I'll start off with the spring season, very good. Majority of our teams, if not all, all of them made the playoffs, which was great. You know, getting right into baseball, we finished, baseball finished with a 13-7 record and received a 3 seed in the playoffs, beat St. John's, which was great in the first round, and, but lost in the quarterfinals to Shrewsbury, sorry, in the semifinals. Boys volleyball finished 14-4, earned a 3 seed in the playoffs, but lost to Lincoln Sudbury in the quarterfinals. Boys rugby, 2-6. I don't know if any of you have been able to get a chance to go out and watch a boys' rugby game, but it's intense, and it's, they, every day they're putting max effort out there, and they do a great job with limited numbers. Some injuries have occurred, however, both teams highly respect each other. The culture that rugby carries is true sportsmanship. It's a great game to watch. They went 2-6. They had two good games against Cambridge Ridge Latin and one over Blue Hills Technical High School. Girls rugby were 1-6 with the win over Waymouth, but they qualified for the playoffs, but had a hard loss to, tough loss to Lincoln Sudbury in the semifinal game. Boys and girls track, great season, 7-1 overall, 3-1 in mid-watch, with individual athletes earning personal school records, and also a chance to compete in New England competition. Girls track won Class A championship at districts in May, and boys track was mid-watch league champions and shared it with Wachusett. Both teams finished in second place at states, so they had a great, great year, both boys and girls track teams. Softball, 5-15, wins over Westboro, Leominster, Groton Dunstable, and Hudson. And as you know, boys tennis and girls tennis, fantastic year, district champions for both, for Division One, and went to the state finals. Boys lacrosse, 16-2, qualified for the districts as a number-one seed, but had a hard loss to, a tough loss to Long Meadow in the district semifinals. Girls lacrosse, 13-5 overall, qualified for a 3 seed and lost to Minichaug in the district semifinals. Our Unified Track and Field Team, three fantastic meets against Hopkinton, Marlborough, and Westboro, and they also competed at leagues and states at Asbit Valley. And our co-ops girls golf team, we co-op with Westboro, finished 13-1 overall and won their first-ever Central Mass League championship and finished third in the state competition, which was great. So that's season overall, in regards to results. Great season followed up all fall, all winter, great results, and both individual and team, and I was very proud of our athletes, our coaches, everybody involved. A lot of hard work and determination goes into, from our athletes and our coaches for those results. Just a couple updates from my last report from last month. We had USA Lacrosse Organization recognize two, one of our girls' lacrosse players and a boys' lacrosse player. Girls lacrosse, Sophie Scarborough, and boys lacrosse was Henry Alfred for All-American Honors, which is a high honor from UMS Lacrosse. And also Matt Nofziger, who is our boys' lacrosse coach, has won Coach of the Year Award for his third time. He won it in 2007 and also 2008, so he won that this year. Our MSTCA, which is our track cross-country, actually cross-country and track, boys cross-country coach Nate Utaro and girls cross-country coach Pat Gavman were named MIA State Track Coaches Association Coach of the Year Award. So they did a great job there. They were just honored on June 9th for that award. And Kevin Hausman was our MIA Coach of the Year for Unified Track. And lastly, we just had our big ARHS Boosters Golf Tournament. We had 115 participants. It's our biggest fundraiser of the year. It's the most we've had in the last five years in regards to golfers. The weather held up for us. It didn't rain until the last hole, which was, which helped, but they gained over $10,000 in regards to sponsorships, 115 golfers, good times, baskets, every team contributed to raffle baskets, and a lot of people came out to support our student athletes, and it was great to see, whether it was community members, alumni, administration, teachers, staff.
I told them how bad it was.
Yeah, it's okay. But it was great, and we look forward to billing that each and every year to get hopefully to 144 golfers every single year and bring back our alumni. And lastly, I know it's the last of the year, but I need to give a special thanks to Central Office Superintendent Johnson, Principal Walsh, the Administration Team, Facilities Department for their hard work preparing the facilities and practicing games. It's another, fall was, had some weather, spring was tough, too, in regards to the rain. Our athletic trainer, John Drisco, our superb coaching staff, Susan Beburns, Administrative Assistant, and our truly outstanding student athletes for a wonderful first year as Athletic Director. It was great to see, it was great to watch, and I look forward to moving on to the fall. See the summer first and get ready for the fall. Actually, to tell you the truth, I'm already working on winter of next year, so. Two seasons ahead. That's the season recap in regards to the spring. I don't know if you would like me to go over touch base in regards to the Guide to Athletics. I know that this was, we were, we touched on this last school committee meeting. I would, I think it was included in the packet. I have included the changes added after our 5-15-19 school committee meeting, which is, it was referenced in regards to adding a section. I think it's very important to add a section to coaches' responsibilities and expectations. What you have there on the Guide to Athletics summary sheet is the introduction, and within the Guide to Athletics, more details the coaches' responsibilities and expectations. There's two additional pages. And underneath, you also have a more of an introduction to our concussion and impact statement. I had, we added a brief introduction, and also I stated in there, there's a link to the informational packet, which we also included. It's a hyperlink within our Guide to Athletics, and that hyperlink will bring you to the three-page packet, informational packet, questions and answers, all about our impact testing, all the information that you need to know is included in that hyperlink, and also it's the same packet that we hand out at each preseason meeting in the spring, winter, and fall, which also goes to our coaches' staff. So the second page is the guide, the summary from the last, I just thought it was very important to see the changes and additions on that first page.
No, I got the, I got the impact piece.
Okay, I can get the one.
Yeah. We have the impact.
Oh, you just got the impact piece. No top sheet.
You know what, if you can email it to me, I can email it.
Okay.
Or to Greg, and then you can get it out to the rest of us.
Okay, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
So these were the two items that we asked you to address.
Yes, these are the two items that we addressed, yeah, from last school, last school committee meeting. So I can, I can email you over the summary sheet and the draft to the Guide to Athletics.
If you send that to Christine or me, we can, Cheryl.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question. Is this part, this impact testing in these two pages, is this part of the Athletic Handbook or is this separate?
So that is now going to be in, it's hyperlinked into the Guide to Athletic Handbook.
It will be.
Yes, so there's a section that says concussion slash impact, and when you click on it, that's the informational pack that will pop up, and I also hand those out at every parent meeting that we have preseason.
Okay. All right.
And we one-call it, too, to the parents.
And Mike, I'd like to thank you for your first year of being Athletic Director and following in the footsteps of Fran Wynn, because he would always come periodically three, four times a year to give us an update, and it's nice to see that that's continuing on. And just as academics, music, art, technology, all of those, foreign language, whatever we have, sports is also an important, integral part for our students. So I'd like to thank you for enlightening us about what is going on with the academics and giving us the extra time and even coming back safely as you're driving.
Yeah.
From the state championships. Thank you very much. Ken?
Couldn't agree more. You've been an unbelievable addition to the team. You're still a student of the game. You're always out there, you know, at every event that you're able to physically get to, and I think you've absolutely had a positive impact on our student athletes, so great to have you onboard.
So I just want to thank you, too. I think it's, you've been very visible at many events, and I think that's important as an Athletic Director or Administration, for you to see support, you know, to all the different teams, so. Good. For us?
Thank you.
You.
All right. Policy Development Distribution.
So you have two policies for distribution in the packet, E240 Bus Transportation and K240 Advertising, Donations, and Sponsorship Policy. And I think it's important to note that one of the items that Shrewsbury mentioned was to have a policy for advertising donations and sponsorship, so this sets us in a good position.
Next is Audience Sharing.
Well, I got the opportunity to go to the graduation this year, and it was quite an event. I switched, but I guess last year did it. If anyone goes, they've switched the orientation, so now the head is near the parking lot end. But, so it was good, it was, but it was very great. I usually always try to make it to all the graduations, and I know last year I wasn't able to attend, so it was good to get back there and see, have the honor of shaking everyone's hand at the graduation as they got their diploma, and so I just want to port that and wish all the graduates well as they move on to their next step. And it was a great, you know, for the students that were going on to the military, it's, you know, that was, it's always, you know, very moving to see, you know, to see the kids that are making that choice, which is, is not, it's a difficult one, and we honor their spending, devoting their time to our freedoms, so.
Personnel?
So personnel for distribution, so quite a few appointments, and George Hanson, beloved art teacher, is retiring, so Algonquin faculty and staff wished him well the last day of school, so he'll be missed. And then some resignations. I was not going to put Michelle T.'s name on there, but we had to, so. And again, congratulations, Michelle.
Communications?
Avenger for distribution.
Should we, like, especially like the end of the year one, the senior one, yeah. Approval of bills and payrolls.
Those are all signed.
All signed, you guys are off to a good time. And agenda items for next year. Anyone?
I'll email you.
All right, is there anything else?
Ocean Dujern?
Second.
All those in favor?
Just kidding.
Have a great summer, you guys.
Thank you.